Encourage the Oregon Legislature to create a transparent, public process to ensure all Oregon residents have timely access to equitable, comprehensive, high-quality, and affordable health care.
Mr. Novick.
Colleagues, this resolution for us today was requested by Health Care for All Oregon. Ensuring that all Portlanders have access to affordable, accessible health care is a passion of mine, which I believe is shared by the rest of the council. So when Health Care for All asked me to introduce this resolution, I was very happy to do so. We have one panel of distinguished guests who will speak to why they support this city resolution. I'd like to welcome Senator Michael Dembrough, Ben Garrett from Cascade AIDS Projects, and Nancy Sullivan from Nurses for Single Payer and the American College of Nurse Midwives to provide some remarks.
Good morning. Welcome, Senator.
Hello. Commissioners, I'm very pleased to be here. I'm Michael Dembrough. I'm the state senator for District 23. That's Northeast and Southeast Portland. I want to thank Commissioner Novick for presenting this very important resolution and the council for hearing it. You know, back in 2010, we passed the Affordable Care Act, well, when Congress passed the Affordable Care Act, we knew that it would do good things, certainly around Medicaid expansion and some other pieces. But we also knew that even when it's fully phased in, there's still going to be problems. Health care or access to quality health care is still going to be largely a function of employment. The high cost of health care is not really addressed in that act. There are a number of things that we are going to have to do to keep working on providing universal health care that's quality care, that's affordable for everyone. One of the positive things that happened in the passage of the Affordable Care Act was a provision was put in, and actually that was largely due to the work of our own Senator Ron Wyden, that allows states to look at and ultimately request waivers for alternative programs. This could not happen until 2017 to give the Affordable Care Act time to roll out, but it's something that states were encouraged to do. And we have followed up on that here in Oregon, looking at crafting in the legislature, working with advocates, bills that would be an Oregon version of universal health care. Starting in 2011, we have provided a bill in each session that would look at what it might look like here in Oregon. In each session, we've doubled the number of sponsors of the bill in order to keep this conversation going within the legislature and to be a vehicle for the state to be talking about this and for organizing to happen. Because we knew that this was not going to be something that the legislature alone could fix. Ultimately, something like universal health care in this state, which is so badly needed, would require a vote of the people and would require organizing all over the state. We knew that to do that, we would have to give the voters confidence that this was a good, responsible plan. And so in 2013, the legislature enacted House Bill 3260, which laid out the principles of what universal health care could look like, and crafted a study that could be done by an outside group to look at what would be the best way of getting to that vision. In 2015, the legislature funded that study, and it's currently underway by the RAND Corporation in connection with a local group, HMA Associates. We'll get the results of that study mid-November, so just a little over a month away from the results of that. We don't obviously want this to be a study that just goes up on the shelf. The next step is to look at the study and to operationalize it. And so we'll have a bill in for next session to create a task force that will take the findings of the study and craft a plan that could then go out to the voters ultimately. We want to make sure that we have the most support possible for this, for the work of this task force. And so we're asking local governments to weigh in and to encourage the legislature to, to keep doing this work. And hence, this resolution, which is in concert with resolutions in governments all over the state, Ashland, Corvallis, I think Eugene, you'll probably hear more. This is really a fine resolution, and I really appreciate your putting it forward. And I'll stop there. I'd be happy to answer any particular questions you might have about the bills, the study, et cetera.
I have one, and that is, why does it take a vote of the people?
The, for universal health care, will require a different funding mechanism. And so the legislature could pass it, but we know that it's the kind of thing that would inevitably be referred to the people. And so it just makes sense to me and to many of my colleagues, let's be proactive about this. Let's assume that this is something that will have to go to the people and do the organizing to build the support for it. And, you know, what we're talking about in coming up with something which is, you know, really very comprehensive and that would, that would address the needs of all Oregonians, this really is something that all Oregonians should weigh in on, I believe.
Thank you for your leadership on this, Senator. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
I just had one question. I guess I'm lost. How does this relate to getting a Medicaid waiver in 2017?
So, this is not just a Medicaid waiver that we're talking about. Now, the state is always asking for different kinds of Medicaid waivers, and we're looking for another one related to our, our CCOs. That's a different story. This is a waiver, and I don't remember the clause in the Affordable Care Act, that's how professionals refer to it, but it's that waiver which allows states to create their own public option or, or more comprehensive system.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Good morning, and thank you, Honorable Commissioners, people in the hall this morning, for your support of equitable access to affordable health care. As Vice President of Health Care for All Oregon, our grassroots statewide coalition, I appreciate this opportunity for coming together, an opportunity to take action for improving health care access for everyone in our state. I'm also here today as a case manager from Cascade AIDS Project and an SEIU 503 board member, both of which are among Health Care for All Oregon's 120-member organizations across the state. As a case manager, I see the negative impacts that ever-increasing health care costs have on working families. I see it in the fleeting smile of a houseless, single mom doing her best to stay healthy while providing for her kids. Affording health care for her family is a luxury far from her reach. I feel the impact on my own family. I was shocked. This year, my husband's health insurance premium increased over 30 percent. A 30 percent increase with reduced benefits. Having enough money for food and housing is challenging enough. Too many of our families are forced into hoping for the best while worried that illness could result in us losing everything. With more than a quarter million people in Oregon uninsured, including over 18,000 children, leadership on this issue is life-saving. Equitable access to affordable health care is the right thing to do for our families, the right thing for our friends, our neighbors, the right thing for our communities. A healthy Portland is an economically empowered one. As Commissioners representing our state's largest city, you can make a powerful statement today. Raise your voices. Champion the economic opportunity that the RAND report may offer by calling on Salem to empower the task force to move forward on health care. If you believe we all deserve affordable health care, vote yes on this resolution. And together, we can make health equity a reality. And I brought a copy of the letter which our, Lee Mercer from our organization, I believe, sent across to each of you electronically. And we just wanted to make sure that each of you received it as well, so would it be okay to?
Yes, please. Thank you. Yeah, thanks very much. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Sullivan. For the record, I am a former board member of Health Care for All Oregon and a current board member of Nurses for Single Payer. I am here as a retired nurse midwife to speak in support of the resolution to ask the Oregon State Legislature to create a task force based on the results of the RAND study on financing universal health care in Oregon. Thank you for taking some time to listen to advocates for universal single payer health care. Those of us who have been actively supporting this issue appreciate the opportunity to tell you why we believe that the best solution to our current out-of-control health care system is the solution adopted by every other developed country. Support for universal single payer health care in the United States has been around for decades, but efforts to legislate it into being have been attacked and defeated in every case by heavily-funded insurance, pharmaceutical, and hospital industry lobbies. As grassroots volunteers, proponents in Oregon know that our strategy to achieve our goal must be to educate the public and to enlist activist supporters. As Nurses for Single Payer, we believe that nurses can be effective advocates. We are actively reaching out to recruit and engage from among the 55,000 registered nurses in Oregon. We are working with the Oregon Nurses Association, already a contributing member of health care, the Health Care for All Oregon Coalition, and nursing educators throughout the state to take a leading role in our campaign. The American model of health care is twice as expensive and considerably less effective than care in many other countries. Of particular interest to me as a midwife, U.S. women are more likely to die during childbirth than women in any other developed country, leading the U.S. to be ranked 33rd among 179 countries on the health and well-being of women and children. The burden of this increased mortality falls not only on poor women without access to care, but also on middle and upper-class women who receive too much care, unnecessary cesareans, elective inductions, and so forth. Likewise, our society as a whole is affected by skewed levels of care, too little for some, too much for others. We can do better, and we must do better. Thank you again for your interest in our campaign for better health for all Oregonians. We hope to have your active support in approving the resolution before you today and in future steps toward universal health care in Oregon.
Thank you very much. I have a, I have a question which I think probably is answered by the membership of your coalition, but I just wanted to get it into the discussion, and that is, we as a city government intersect with this issue in several ways. One, we're an employer, so we spend a great deal of money providing with our, our employees with good health care, and that's a blessing that they receive that not everybody obviously does. Secondly, we have an interest in the prosperity and livability of our city for everyone, regardless of their income, and so we see the effects of people that can't afford their health care, and maybe you're getting a big rent increase at the same time. So, you know, those, those economic justice issues end up, again, landing on our agenda. How do we, how do we respond to those sometimes downstream crises that the health care issue causes? Another way, and that's why I'm getting to my question, that we really specifically intersect with this issue is mental health and addiction. Although the state and county governments are the primary caregiver for mental health and addiction, the police bureau ends up being the first responder, or the fire bureau. Our, for example, our firefighters and police officers so far have used the antidote to heroin addiction, I think it's now 812 times, which is, again, a blessing in that 812 people have been saved from an overdose, but it just illustrates that those two, those, those areas of drug addiction and mental health end up intersecting with our work and, of course, with, you know, the whole livability of the city. So, big, big, long-winded introduction. Bear, bear with me for that. To what extent does your vision and the, and the program that you ultimately have in mind encompass mental health care and addiction care as opposed to traditional preventative care and responsive care for, for, you know, more physical, more typical, physical health care? Because obviously, it's, a true health care system is going to pay attention to mental health. Our national one doesn't do a very good job of that right now. And a comprehensive health care system is going to pay attention, addiction, pay attention to addiction because that's a massive health problem in our community and across the country. So, how are you thinking about those two facets of health care as you, as you develop this vision?
No, I think the core of the vision is, is integration in all ways. Integration of delivery, integration of funding, integration of every piece of a person's health. And, you know, one of the, and that is specifically called out in the vision for health care that's in 3260. I won't read each of the, you know, the elements, but you should take a look at it sometime because, you know, I'm really proud that the legislature did say that it finds that the best system for the delivery and financing of health care in this state will follow these principles. And integration is really at the heart of it.
Good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Other questions? Thank you very much for being here today. Appreciate this.
Thank you.
Other invited testimony, Steve?
No.
Okay. Okay, others that would like to speak on this item, come on up, please.
I have about 10 people signed up.
Okay, I guess let Carla call you, sorry.
Cedric Wilkins, Mary Henrich, and Mimi Germaine. And they'll be followed by Robert West, Chris Low, and Jesse Spawnberg.
Okay, good morning.
I'm Cedric Wilkins, and I was a strong supporter of the Oregon Health Plan. Unfortunately, some of the support of that was fought in the legislature by the education lobby. In 1993, there was a sales tax for schools, which failed. I was part of that. But because of that, Barbara Roberts did not run for a second term. I have dentistry from the county. It is covered, they just did dentistry on me for $400. It was covered by the Oregon Health Plan. Okay? So this is real stuff. I do not believe, soon, there may be amnesty for Hispanic Oregonians, 100,000 of them. They'll need health care, and they probably can't afford it. It should be free. There was companies like England where health care is free. Canada is free except for dentistry. You have to have a, a plan like $300. It's, Canadian officials came down to Oregon and wondered how Oregon could pay for dentistry on the Oregon Health Plan, right? It was really weird. But at least there is, there is some remnants of the Oregon Health Plan left. And basically, that money is directed towards women who need abortions and cannot financially support a child, and that is, was done by the federal government and administered by the state of Oregon. I want to remind Amanda Fritz that the first time I ever talked in front of city council was the fact that the, or, healthy, healthy kids did not cover non-residents of Oregon, and you said that there would be no backlash, and you were right. So I, I actually, if I want to be a lobbyist for Salem, I will be for single payer, Canadian style health care. Unfortunately, there's a catch is that in Canada, they have a 5 percent national sales tax. So if you ever see people talk about single payer, they only say Canadian style. Oregon will probably never have a sales tax, but I support it. I was in the Army. I got free health care. I also believe that food stamps should be administered to all Oregonians. Nobody should starve in this state, and food is a matter of health care. If you don't get food, you die. So it's a health care issue. On education issues, I believe in private schools. I believe in homeschooling. And I will vote for Measure 97, but I don't think it will pass, and neither does Mayor-Elect Ted Wheeler. It has been, actually, to, the experiment leaked and announced that the Measure 97 is a sales tax. Some people have said that. I don't think it'll pass. That will actually make sure that the education lobby does not fight the health care lobby for the next couple of years. We have a good, we have a, have a good opening here for single payer in Oregon.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Mary Lou Henrich, and I am a retired public health nurse administrator and know most of you from my past experiences working on issues that are near and dear to both of our, to all of our hearts. And I'm not going to repeat everything that was said this morning. I just wanted you to know that I'm really pleased, Steve, that you are putting this forward, and I believe that it will get passed. It's, you know, it's a small step. I think that it's important that the study that everybody has fought for, that RAND is now doing, is getting done so we can really look at, at really kind of the devil in the details. What would it really look like? Because, as you say, the city, the county, the state, private employers, everybody is throwing a ton of money at health care. And we've, and, and it's just, the costs keep rising. You keep hearing about the increases in the insurance costs and in the costs of, you know, I looked at, when I was Executive Director of Care Oregon and was looking at costs of MRIs in the early days, you know, they were about $250, and now, you know, they're, depend 1,800 and 2,000 and more. And it's kind of like, that's only 10 years. So, really, indeed, we have got to get our hands around, and I really agree with him. The answer is a single payer where you've got your arms around it, and you can look at the prevention activities, the things that need to be done community-wide, the parks, all of those pieces, housing, that really are things that make people, allow them to be healthy. Then you have for the times when your genetics and other things, accidents, whatever get in the way, then you have to have the care that comes in, and it has to be affordable, has to be coordinated, and our heads and our bodies are not disconnected. And so our mental health and our physical health need to be integrated. But when we've got this system that is kind of like the house that Jack built, it's going to be difficult to dismantle pieces, to change pieces. Everybody hangs on to the devil they know versus the devil they don't know, and it's a scary proposition. So, moving it forward and, you know, just keep pushing. And I, I laughed when I heard Nancy talk about how many decades we've been working on this. In 1965, I was a state debate champion from a small school, and our topic was hereby resolved that the United States of America will have national health care.
Some good ideas take time. Thank you.
The next three are, first, was there a Mimi Germaine, Germaine, maybe? Okay, so the next three are Robert West, Chris Low, and Jesse Spawnberg.
Come on up.
West may have left. Let's go ahead and go Jim Robison or Robinson.
Good morning. Morning. My name is Chris Low. I'm an activist with Health Care for All Oregon. I'm also on the board of Oregon Physicians for Social Responsibility, which is a member of Health Care for All Oregon. I wanted to talk to you today a little bit about politics and the politics of health care. This council in 2009 passed a resolution led by Commissioner Randy Leonard endorsing HR 676, which was a national single payer bill at the time. I think Commissioner Fritz was on, on the council at the time, and Commissioner Saltzman, though, I think you were out of town when the vote actually happened. And I think Commissioner Fish was on the council. So, Portland as a city is on record supporting the principle of single payer, which is essentially what was at stake in that resolution. That same year, I attended an event that included Representative Blumenauer, State Senator Allen Bates, who unfortunately passed away earlier this year from Ashland, and Mike Huntington, who was President, first president of the current incarnation of HCAO. He's one of the mad as hell doctors who turned around. And Senator Bates, who's kind of, if you follow the health care politics in the state, he was one of the real crafters of our current system, the transformation, the merger of that with the Oregon version of, of a kind of, you know, sort of like what the ACA is nationally. He said this very interesting thing. He said, "If you look at the way that the costs of health care are going, you know, this is, the curve for income goes up this much, and the curve for health care cost goes up this much, and at some point, maybe around 2030, they cross." And, you know, health care is the entire income, you know? And that's not obviously really going to happen. But the other thing he said about it was, "Right now, 60 percent of people are more afraid of losing what they have and like it well enough." Not that it's necessarily great, but good enough that they're not going to support a single payer system. He was agnostic about that. He was saying, "If we could get there, might be great. But I don't think it's going to happen, so let's see if we can do things in the meantime to solve the problems by other means." But he said, "If that doesn't happen, the rising costs are going to make it worse and worse, and eventually, we're going to get to a point where 60 percent of the people are more afraid of what happens to them under what they currently have than in the future." And, and what we see happening now is that that dynamic is playing out. Those of us who've been consistent single payer advocates have always thought this would be the case. The dynamics of the system, the ACA does not address the underlying crisis. So, in terms of moving to politics, this task force gets the Oregon legislature more into the practicalities of how we take the next steps. So I'm here to ask you to support Commissioner Novick's resolution as tribunes of the people of Portland to the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Spawnberg, I think you're next. Go ahead.
I would just, my name is Jesse Spawnberg. I would just ask that you guys support Commissioner Novick's resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hi, I'm Jim Robinson. Thank you, mayor and commissioners. I just wanted to share with you a recent incident that highlighted for me the importance of taking action on this. I'm a state board member of Health Care for All Oregon, and I have seen far too many people over the years who just suffer from our current system, and it needs to be fixed. But one thing highlighted that for me just the other day, some of you have met my mom, Rose Robinson, and she fell the other day and broke her hip. Her first comment after she fell was, "I hope my insurance will cover this." This system is so bad that an 86-year-old retired ICU nurse is concerned about whether her injury would be covered. It shouldn't be the first thought on anyone's mind when they have an injury of whether or not they're going to be covered for treatment on, on that. Now fortunately, she is covered by Medicare, and so she's able to get that treatment. But for many people, there's no option. They have to either go without treatment or go deep into debt. That shouldn't be the system. I really support this, and I appreciate the work being done on this. I also greatly appreciate the leadership of Senator Dembrough and Representative Smith-Warner in the legislature in moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hope your mom's doing okay and that she was covered.
Yeah, and she's, she's in very good spirits.
Thank you. Thanks very much. So let's move on, folks, but first, I've got to make an announcement. Commissioner Saltzman's had to leave the chambers because he's the commissioner in charge of the Fire Bureau, and we're going to have to move our other items this afternoon because he's going to be on scene. We've had a gas explosion at a, at a bakery at 23rd and Gleason, and we have a couple of firefighters, at least a couple who are injured, and they're still looking for other victims of this. So obviously, it's a serious situation, and as the commissioner in charge of the Fire Bureau, he needs to be there. So he will be absent for the remainder of this morning's session. Will act on items or hear items that don't require four of us to be here, including this one, so we can continue with this discussion and other stuff on our agenda that we can do this morning, and we'll move the other items to this afternoon. So please.
The next three are David Davis, Charles Bridge Crane Johnson, and Barbara Council.
Come on up. All right. Go right ahead.
Well, when I walked in, I didn't know I was speaking, but I don't mind. I just signed up to come in. Thank you very much for your time. So usually, when I talk about this, I talk about my experience. In 2005, I had a great job, great insurance, very fortunate. I had a very bad accident, which totally disabled me. I was very lucky. As I was getting out of the hospital, I found out that my bill would have been $450,000, and they weren't even done with me yet because, well, I nearly lost my life. When I was recouping at home, I'm thankful, me, I had family to take care of me instead of putting me in a nursing home. And I was reading articles in the Oregonian that were making me sick. One, I read about a child who was six months old who died because her parents waited to take the child to the emergency room, knowing how expensive it was. And these were working parents. They just did not have access to health care. The second one was so disturbing, I, originally, I felt so guilty for surviving what I survived because I found out that a 15-year-old died because her parents, both working, they had insurance, the insurance company denied them the, the care for their daughter who had, who needed a liver transplant, and I just had one. And so I knew that the insurance company was full of baloney. As for, I mean, it's risky, of course, but it's doable. And they made their decisions based on profit instead of on what this child needed. And instead of staying home and being depressed, I went and fought for it because I met mad as hell. Hell doctors and the physicians group, and eventually joined Healthcare For All Oregon. So, that is why I'm a big volunteer for Healthcare For All Oregon, because I know it's necessary. And I don't think children, obviously, Oregon's done better, and we do have pretty good access for children, but it's still not enough. And I do not think that we should allow profits to make decisions over people's healthcare. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Good morning. Would you like to be next?
I'll go next. Good morning, commissioners. For the record, my name is Charles Johnson, and it's been my privilege to occasionally volunteer off and on with HCAO. For those who don't know, the quickest way to find out more about this issue is on the internet, simply hcao.org, Healthcare For All Oregon. And we have a chance to treat our neighbors, to be groundbreakers in the treatment of our neighbors, to move ahead, hopefully, ahead of the state of Vermont. Be hard to catch Colorado, depending on how their vote goes this fall, but anybody who's, you know, we sometimes have unfortunate experiences with our elderly relatives and a little glitch in Medicaid, but almost everybody knows that the inequitable way we have a single payer system for older Americans and not for younger Americans clearly illustrates that nine times out of 10, people will agree younger Americans get an even worse runaround from an even worse private insurance system than anything that our parents or grandparents have to face. Because of the power of the insurance lobby, we need to engage. The way HCAO works is through neighborhood area, regional coalitions as part of a statewide organization. And if you really want your children to have the best outcomes possible for healthcare, it's important that, obviously, the council passed this resolution to help move the state in the right direction. But that, you engage on the local level, not just in quadrennial or biennial elections, but go to the website, hcao.org, and meet some good people and work on a very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
So, I wanted to talk about expanding healthcare and being progressive and actually sending people that have drug problems out of the country to Mexico or Canada to go to Ibogaine clinics, which actually has been proven to cure addiction instead of prolong it with programs like methadone and other stuff. And the reason why Ibogaine isn't legal in America is because the pharmaceutical industry owns America. And I would like to see progressive health policies like Ibogaine clinics actually possibly coming to Portland. And we have an ayahuasca church here, which, you know, is legal under Oregon constitution. And there's actually religions that are based on the Iboja plant in Africa. So, maybe with a little twerking of laws based on religious freedom, we could actually expand healthcare here in Oregon. And do any of you guys actually know about Ibogaine?
Heard about it. Appreciate you bringing it up.
Well, you should Google it. There's a, it's known all around the world, and it actually has an amazing rate of curing addiction, which would lower crime and all kinds of stuff. So, that is something you could do to actually expand healthcare in Oregon and be progressive leaders in, in cure addiction and things like that.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, next three.
If Mimi, Jermaine, and Robert West were the last two who signed up.
Okay, come on up.
Sure. Good morning. Good morning. My name is Robert West, and there's a few things I wanted to bring up. First, I'm all for the healthcare thing. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is that there has to be some kind of healthcare because, for instance, like last week when the fascist goons attacked peaceful protesters at City Hall, one guy got a broken arm out of it. I believe three or four people were sent to the hospital. And I think that something needs to come of that. You know, they need some kind of medical care, some kind of, where the city can pay for it, or where the state can pay for it. One of the people that had a broken arm is actually, actually stays at R2D2 and doesn't have money. And when he, when he was at the hospital, he was met with a security force that stayed outside his door and dealt with doctors and stuff that had really bad bedside manner. And they heard that a four-year-old girl was also transported to, to the hospital with pepper spray injuries. And I find it sort of ironic that the Portland police find it necessary to pepper spray a four-year-old girl. To me, that's just beyond what, what I would consider even social, you know, being social. There's no reason why the police should have forced elderly women, children, and adults, and forced them to, basically shove them outdoors, stomping, stomping and stumbling on other people. I understand, and the officer got injured in that, which I really don't care because I was there, I was in the front part, and the police actually were the ones that initiated the actions. That's why I call them fascist goons, because they didn't care about public safety, they didn't care about anyone else's safety, they just wanted to force people out. And like I said, several people got injured, four went to the hospital, twenty had to lay in the street, and some of those that laid in the street were charged with disorderly conduct. And I haven't heard anything from City Hall or the police on any kind of apologies. The only thing that I've heard is that it's the protesters' fault for being in, in the hallway, and that people need, you know, the people of this society need, of Portland need to decide, do they want mayors and commissioners that decide that they're going to allow police to assault peaceful people? And what's next, Gestapo-type police force? I heard you've talked about how you want to bring police officers in, and actions like that won't bring good police officers in. It'll bring in the racist cops, it'll bring in the cops that have vendettas against people. That's the kind of police force that you're trying to bring in, you know? And we can use universal healthcare as an incentive, but the truth is, is that very few people like bullies, and I've seen a lot of bullies with badges. And the mayor and the commissioners really should be ashamed of themselves at the way the police reacted. They made sure that people that had tickets, I still got all six of my tickets, were not able to speak, police weren't allowing certain people upstairs to speak. And I really think that the city commissioners and the mayor really needs to look at the situation. They owe, they definitely owe the public an apology. There's people out there, when the protesters got out and was on the sidewalk and the police came out and was pepper spraying people, there, you had bystanders looking around going, "What's going on here? Why are they spraying people on the sidewalk and stuff?" One lady was injured and couldn't move, and there was an officer standing over her, and she wound up being arrested, too. Two people were charged with coercion, which was ridiculous. The DA dropped those charges immediately. So, that's, that's what, that's what I wanted to bring up. I wanted to let you guys know that me and other people are getting really sick and tired of the brutality of the police force, and that I intend on doing everything I can to document and bring in, also, if possible, bring civil and criminal charges against any officers or city workers that assist the police, condone the police, or anything like that as far as assaulting, injuring, or any, or anything like that to protesters or anyone else. Like I said, a little four-year-old girl got pepper sprayed and wound up in the hospital, and the police brought nothing, said nothing about that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else on this item?
That's all who signed up.
Okay, then let's take a vote, please.
Novick?
Thank you so much to Senator Dembrow, Ben Garrett, and Nancy Sullivan for speaking today, to all of the others who spoke, especially, I have to say, Mary Lou Hendrick, and I still feel guilty about not supporting you for that state representative seat years ago. Thanks to Lee Mercer for his role on this issue. Without question, the Affordable Care Act has succeeded in improving healthcare for many people. Specifically, the Medicaid expansion has been a tremendous help in reducing the number of Oregonians and Portlanders who are uninsured. The expansion isn't perfect. Notably, it doesn't extend coverage to immigrants, leaving a large and unconscionable gap in the program. It's made a huge difference to many people, driving down the uninsurance rate in Oregon to just 5%. I recently, Mayor-elect Wheeler and I went to San Antonio to view a homeless services campus they have there, and they have a medical component of their services, and that costs them about $4 million a year. And I asked them how much of that would be covered if Texas had accepted the Medicaid expansion, which it rejected, and they said all of it would be covered. So, I'm grateful that we did accept the Medicaid expansion in Oregon. But the Affordable Care Act has not made healthcare affordable for all, and it hasn't solved core issues related to portability and the cost of health insurance benefits that are borne by employers and employees. It's important to note that healthcare is economic development. If we could drive down the cost of health insurance for employers, we'd go a long way toward improving their economic competitiveness. This resolution calls on the legislature to take the next step toward the goal of comprehensive, affordable healthcare for all. I'm pleased to support the efforts of Healthcare For All Oregon, and pleased to vote aye.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Novick, for introducing this resolution. I was very proud to work with Mayor Adams and Commissioner Randy Leonard in 2009, co-sponsored the resolution, calling on the Congress to do this. Of course, they haven't yet, but at least we have President Obama having given us, as a country, a step, a great step forward with the Affordable Health, Affordable Care Act. I'm seeing Chris Low and Jim Robison and Mark Sturwitz, many people here, been working on this for a very long time. You can tell by my accent, which, by the way, is more British because my family just came over for my son's wedding and it got stuck. So, a couple people said that healthcare is free in England or in Canada, and of course, it isn't. It's cost quite a lot of money, and that's why Senator Dembrow has to, is suggesting that we send it to the voters. The city of Portland has a great plan with wonderful benefits, and we haven't had a cost increase for several years in a row, I believe. So, it is possible, if you've got a well-managed system that focuses also on prevention and wellness, as well as getting people to see their primary care provider at the right time rather than waiting to go to the emergency room, we can do it. So, please add my name as a retired registered nurse to the thousands of Oregon Nurses Association's members, of which I remain one, to support this. Thanks to Commissioner Novick and Laura Hansen on his staff, who worked very hard on this resolution, as did Goldan Salazar on my office. It's good. And we will be having a legislative agenda setting process in November. I encourage you all to be part of that, where we're going to not only see what other things do the citizens want to include on the city's agenda, but also have some training on how to advocate effectively at the legislature. So, watch out for that date coming soon to a venue near you. Thank you very much for all your work. Aye.
Ayes.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Novick, and all of you who are advocates for good public policy, because that's what this is. And this resolution is both timely and influential. Timely because, as Commissioner Fritz just mentioned, every legislative cycle, we develop a package of issues that we care about, and we and our lobbyists go to the legislature in coalitions like this and try to make things happen. And it tends to actually work lately, thanks to an excellent legislature. So, things like getting the ban on the preemption of inclusionary housing was accomplished last session in just such a coalition effort, where it was in our legislative agenda, developed with public advice, like Commissioner Fritz just said, and then carried down there. So, this is timely and, and just in time for us to add that to our package, and I believe, obviously, that we should. Secondly, it's influential, and I want to reinforce your belief that, in this kind of grassroots effort, because I see three areas where policymaking at the local level, and then sometimes rising to the state level, then starts to have a national or even a global impact. One is the environment. You know, I was a newly-minted city commissioner, sitting where Steve sits, in 1993, when we passed the nation's first local climate action plan. Well, now, there's cities all over the world with a climate action plan, and we're one of eighty-some cities that are in the C40 group, and those cities turned out to be really influential in Paris when the latest climate change accords were adopted. Not to mention the fact that if we do what we've got in our plans, it'll have a huge impact on climate right there. So, there's a case where grassroots action at the local level then has risen to the global level, and that's true now as we take up the question of fossil fuels in our city and how much, if any, expansion they should have here. Another area is human rights, that, you know, we passed a domestic partners ordinance when I was on the city council the first time around, and then we supported marriage equality, and other cities and states did likewise, and then it became the law of the land. And so, on human rights issues, the same sort of bottom-up grassroots-driven effort, yes, has, has changed the country for the good. And then the third is economic justice, that we've taken action here at this table on, on wages for our employees, on banning the box, and again, we're seeing that kind of upwelling from the community level to the state level to the national level. And I believe that's what's going to happen on this issue, too. It's just the force of history. Maybe it's taken way too long, for those of you who've been working on this for a long time, thank you. But I do believe that more and more, we're seeing that pattern, where the people have their say at the local level, it turns into state policy, and it eventually turns into the law of the land, at least with the good Supreme Court. So, we appreciate all of you very much, and Steve, thank you for your leadership on this. Good work. Aye. Thank you all very much.